Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call to order our April 23, 2019, regular meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. Before we begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to point out we have a couple of guests with us tonight. We have Hope, Josiah, Tyler, and Katie with us, sophomores at Shelton High School. And Tyler has agreed to lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. And so Tyler, if you wouldn't mind getting us started.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to item number three. If the clerk would please take roll.
Commissioner, District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner, District Two, Kevin Chuting.
Here.
Commissioner, District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item number four, this is our Correspondence and Organizational Business. We begin with item 4.1. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
State of Washington, Department of Commerce sent in a letter requesting the designation of an Associate Development Organization, or ADO. Economic Development Council of Mason County sent in their 2019 first-quarter report. And we've received a complaint letter regarding instruction and personnel at Fire District Six.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item number two, we have a news release. Mason County Civil Service Commission vacancy. You'll know that staff to come forward and read that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Frank Pinter with Support Services. Mason County Civil Service Commission vacancy. The Board of Mason County Commissioners is seeking application to fill a position on Mason County Civil Service Commission. This is for an unexpired six-year term that will end on December 31, 2022. To qualify, the individual must be a United States citizen, a resident of Mason County for at least the past two years, and an elector in Mason County. This person cannot be employed by Mason County and shall serve without compensation. At the time of appointment, not more than two Commissioners shall be adherents of the same political party. The general purpose of the Civil Service Commission is to establish a merit system of employment for county deputy sheriffs and other employees of the office of the county sheriff. The Mason County Civil Service Commission meets on the third Thursday of each month at 5:00 PM in Mason County Building Number One at 411 North Fifth Street in Shelton. Interested parties may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioners' office, 411 North Fifth Street in Shelton, or call 427-9670, extension 419, or visit the Mason County website at www.co.mason.wa.us. Applicants will be accepted until Friday, May 10, 2019, or until filled. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to item number five. This is our Open Form for Citizen Input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the Commission on items that are not on today's agenda. If you'd like to address the Commission on items not on tonight's agenda, if you raise your hand, the chair will recognize you. Come forward to the podium, state your name, and then make your remarks. We have a three-minute-per-person limit and about a 15-minute total limit on this item. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Sure. With visual aids. We like that.
Keep your weight. My name is Chris Drury. I am music teacher at North Mason High School, and I just kind of wanted to come and share some things that are happening at our high school up north in the Fine Arts Department and just kind of educate people here and who might be watching about what might be going on, how they can get involved. This Thursday, we have a Jazz Night, which is a fundraiser for North Mason High School, for everyone who would like to come. It is held at North Mason High School in the auditorium. It's at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $10. And all proceeds go to help the North Mason Music Boosters Scholarship Fund. Each year, we try and give out two scholarships of $1,000 each to students going on to college in whatever field they might want to. So we hope that we can raise money for that. We have 250 seats in the theater, so if we sold out, that would definitely make our goal there and exceed slightly. We have three groups that are going to be coming this year. We have North Mason High School, which will be there. We have Swing Fever, which is a local jazz band made up of community members from Belfair, Shelton, and the whole Mason County. And then we also have the Tenino High School Jazz Band, which is coming up, and they're directed by Mr. Andrew Bowerly out of Tenino, Washington. Again, that is, this Thursday starts at 7:00. The doors should be opening at 6:30. Come in and get a seat. We also have, I just came from our musical rehearsal, we have our musical Mama Mia, which is going to be coming here soon, May 9th, 10th, 16th, 17th, and the 18th. And kids are really excited about that. We also have an all-district concert, which is all the students from North Mason School District. I get to conduct over about 200 kids at one time in a gym. So that is going to be May the 3rd at 6:30, and that is free for anyone who wants to come and see me panic and flap my arm while I try and keep kids together. But all of it is in good fun, and come out and enjoy some great music that's going on up at the North Mason School District. We have some great activities going on. We'd love to share it with everyone.
And where do we get tickets?
Tickets you can get at the door. So we have, they, our Music Boosters will be there about 5:30 if you want to come early and get a ticket. But the doors themselves, you know, will be opening about 6:30.
Great, very good, thank you.
And you might get to see me play there. Don't know.
It's worth it. I'm telling you.
Okay, anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number six, which is adoption of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt tonight's agenda for May 23, 2019.
I will second.
We've moved and seconded to adopt the agenda for May, April 23, 2019. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Item number seven, approval of minutes. We have minutes from April 8, 2019's briefing, March 19, April 2, and April 9's regular meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes, April 8, 2019 briefing minutes, March 19, April 2, and April 9, 2019 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
We've moved and seconded to approve the April 8, 2019 briefing minutes, and the March 19, April 2, and April 9, 2019 regular meeting minutes as presented. Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, this is approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on tonight's action agenda, at which time a Commissioner or member of the public may ask for an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Netherland, if you'd please read items 8.1 through 8.5. Commissioner Trask, 8.6 through 8.10. And I will read 8.11 through 8.16.
Mr. Chairman, item number 8.1 reads, approval of the certification of sponsor match form with Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO, for the replacement and upgrading of the irrigation system at Mason County Recreational Area, the M-C-R-A, and the approval to allow the Parks and Trails Manager to sign that form. Item number 8.2, approval of Mason County Sheriff's Office extra-duty service contract with the Timberlakes Community. Item number 8.3, approval of the cost reimbursement agreement between the Seattle Police Department and the Mason County Sheriff's Office to reimburse personal training and travel to the 2019 Crimes Against Children Conference in Dallas, Texas. Item number 8.4, approval to authorize the Chair to sign a resolution related to the ownership of a potlatch cemetery. Item number 8.5, approval to appoint William Bazanson to the Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency of Aging for a two-year term ending April 23, 2021. And, item number 8.6, approval of warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance claims clearing fund, warrants number 8063696 through 8063847, the amount of $514,555.43.
Item 8.7, approval of a contract with Kennedy Jenkins Construction or Consultants, Inc., in the amount of $439,816 for the Belfair General Sewer Plan Amendment and preliminary design report for the sewer extension to Puget Sound Industrial Area, PCIS. Item 8.8, approval to authorize the county engineer to submit the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant to WASDOT by May 31 for safety improvements throughout Mason County, as well as the approval to authorize the county engineer to sign all pertinent documents for the grant. Item 8.9, approval to authorize the county engineer to submit the 2019 Federal Highways Bridge Program Grant Proposal, and approval to authorize the county engineer to sign all pertinent documents for the grant. The Board will be asked for their guidance on inclusion of bridge lighting as part of this application. Item 8.10, approval of the resolution for County Road Project Number 2019, Romance Hill Belfair Freight Corridor Connector. Approval to authorize the Chair to sign all pertinent documents and authorize the Public Works County Engineer to advertise, set bid dates and times, and award contract not to exceed $1,500,000. Also, approval to authorize Public Works to solicit a request for qualifications for a consultant to provide an analysis and design for the location of the new Romance Hill Freight Corridor Connector and enter into a contract not to exceed $350,000.
Item 8.11, approval to reappoint Janice Loomis to a three-year term on the Mason County Board of Equalization. This term ends May 31, 2022. Item 8.12, approval to enter into a lease agreement with North Mason Resources, providing office space to veteran service officers, effective May 2019, at $350 per month payable from the Veterans Assistance Fund Number 190, as recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board. Item 8.13, approval to sign the Associate Development Organization Certification Designation Form, designating the Mason County Economic Development Council as the Associate Development Organization, ADO, to coordinate economic development services for Mason County, under contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce. This is pursuant to RCW 43.330.080 and is for the 2019-2021 biennium. Item 8.14, approval of amendments to contract DY2-K2293-32 between Cascade Pacific Action Alliance and Mason County Community Services for Medicaid Transformation Projects. Item 8.15, approval to set a public hearing on May 7, 2019, to receive comments on a proposition to enact a 3/10% public safety sales tax increase. And item 8.16, approval of the letter of support for Mason Transit Authority's grant application to the Federal Transit Administration to obtain two hybrid buses for the worker-driver program. Okay, now that Commissioners have read through all of the items on tonight's action agenda, Commissioners, are there any items you'd like to have removed for a separate discussion and vote?
Just clarifications, Commissioner. Because you did say the right amount, do you still want that taken off for separate vote? Or are you comfortable with just letting the folks know that it was a misprint in the paper?
I think, let's, is that fine? Melissa, Frank, should we?
Probably for clarity, you should do a motion.
Okay.
Then I'll have that, ask for that one to be removed, please.
Okay, so we'll remove item 8.15. Commissioner Trask, any items to be removed?
No.
Okay, I would like to remove item 8.10 for discussion. Any members of the public have items to be removed for discussion or separate vote? Okay, all right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the action agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the action agenda as presented, with the exception of 8.10 and 8.15, which will be removed for a separate vote.
I second.
So we've moved and seconded to approve the items on tonight's action agenda, items 8.1 through 8.16, with the exception of 8.10 and 8.15, which will be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Any additional discussion?
Just a comment. I want to thank North Mason Resources. That's a very cheap rent that they're offering for our veterans up there, and it's very much appreciated. Imagine having an office for $350 and they answer phones. They greet people when they're coming in the door, and when you're not there, even, it's awful nice of them, and it's very much appreciated.
And any additional comments? Just a word of thanks to Mr. Bazanson, who's here with us tonight, who has stepped forward to serve on the Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging. We are very appreciative of all of our volunteers in the community that stepped forward to serve on these committees, and so we thank you for being here with us tonight and for stepping up to serve on that particular committee. Thank you. Hearing no additional discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, that takes us to our items that were removed for a separate discussion and vote. We'll begin with item 8.10, approval of the resolution for County Road Project Number 2019, Romance Hill Belfair Freight Corridor Connector. Approval to authorize the Chair to sign all pertinent documents and authorize the Public Works County Engineer to advertise, set bid dates, times, and award contract not to exceed $1.5 million. Also, approval to provide an analysis and design for the location of the new Romance Hill Freight Corridor Connector and enter into a contract not to exceed $350,000. I have staff to please brief.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will provide just a very quick overview of how we came to their quest this evening, and then I will turn it over for a real short recap with our county engineer, Diane Cheesely, to talk specifically about the scope of work and the contract that we're requesting approval for. Basically, we are asking to prepare a design for a connection from existing SR3 in downtown Belfair to the proposed new freight corridor that will be up on the ridge above Belfair. And this has long been in the planning. Sometime in 2016 or 17, we came before Commissioners to talk about planning for potential connections to the new freight corridor and began a design process, which is referred to as the Belfair Mobility Plan. This process had pretty significant community engagement. We collaborated with the community through events, polls, and surveys, one-on-one, small group discussions, and there was quite a bit of media coverage throughout the process. This began in 2017 and culminated in a final plan in September of 2018. In addition to the community outreach and the process to develop our, look at different scenarios and actually select the two connections, we also then have our Citizen Advisory Board, which is TIPCAP, who reviews and makes recommendations on an annual basis to Commissioners about projects to include in our six-year TIP and our annual construction program. And they too recommended proceeding with the design of the Romance Hill Connector. The other connector that was identified was Log Yard Road, and I'm happy to talk about how, why, and what all went into that, but I'll cut it short at this point. And I'll kick it over to Diane, who can talk about the specifics of the contract itself.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. So as we're coming today to ask for a CRP creation, some of the response that we have heard is asking about the construction, because the construction dollars are also included, and that's just our standard. When we ask for a CRP, we're asking for the entire project to be set up. But at this time, we are looking to hire a consultant through the Request for Qualifications process, and that will be a two-part process, where we'll hire a consultant to do the first two things that we would need to have for the project to move forward, is a permit with the Navy and concurrence from WASDOT. And that will be done along with additional public outreach. And when those items are successful, then we would move on to a second piece of a contract with a consultant, which would be to finish the design. And then only after all of that is successful would we move on to construction. So the reason that the CRP just covers the whole thing is just our standard practice, that we include the whole entire project. But I just want to make sure that the Commission and the community all understand that we're not going to construction yet, even though the dollars are included. So are there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner? Okay, any questions from the public? Okay, appreciate that, thank you. And then so with that, we'll move to either a motion or a Commissioner deliberation.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the resolution for the County Road Project Number 2019, Romance Hill Freight Corridor Connector. Approval to authorize the Chair to sign all pertinent documents and authorize the Public Works County Engineer to advertise, set bid dates, times, and award contract not to exceed $1.5 million. Also, approval to authorize Public Works to solicit a request for qualifications for a consultant to provide an analysis and design for the location of the new Romance Hill Freight Corridor Connector and enter into a contract not to exceed $350,000.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution for County Road Project Number 2019, Romance Hill Belfair Freight Corridor Connector. Approval to authorize the Chair to sign all pertinent documents and authorize the Public Works County Engineer to advertise, set bid dates, times, and award contract not to exceed $1.5 million. Also, approval to authorize Public Works to solicit a request for qualifications for a consultant to provide analysis and design for the location of the new Romance Hill Freight Corridor Connector and enter into a contract not to exceed $350,000. Any additional discussion? I just have a quick, a couple of comments. So I appreciate staff's willingness and availability to continue to work with the community on this. As you mentioned, this has been discussed for a long time, and there's some good news to this, because that means that the Belfair bypass, the Safe Route 3 freight corridor is coming. So we have a lot to look forward to with that project that has been long anticipated. The other thing that I would just ask the Commission and staff to caution on it is, I think it's critical that we get some insight from our consultants through this process as to a timeline to expect from the Navy. The crossing, whether it's at grade or above grade, changes things dramatically, and it's critical, I think, for us as decision-makers to know what we should be expecting as a timeline for approval of the easements and permitting and all the things that go along with that as it works with, as you work with DOT in particular, on their construction of the freight corridor. So supportive of this, I think this could be a great opportunity for the North Mason community and for Belfair. It's absolutely fantastic that we have the freight corridor coming in. There's a lot of work that went into that, and so I appreciate that. But I want us to be cautious of the timeline, and so that we're able to line that up, so that we make this a successful project. So that would be my only, my only comment. Any additional discussion? Okay. Oh. Sure.
That does usually happen, though.
People don't usually ask to come back for more.
I did want to let you know, we have met with the Navy and the timeline for the permit, and this is why we're wanting to move forward now, even though there is knowledge out there that the project is likely in 2021, 2022, 2023. So it feels a long time out there before we'll get to construction, but it takes between eight months and a year to get a permit through the Navy. And so that's, they've told us, eight months to a year, possibly even a little longer than a year. So I wanted to share that, so that everyone would have that information. Thank you.
Okay, dare I ask, any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the motion carries. Moving on to our next item that was removed, item 8.15, approval to set a public hearing on May 7, 2019, to receive comments on a proposition to enact a 3/1% public safety sales tax increase. Just by way of, just doing a quick brief on this, this is an item that the Commission is moving forward for a public hearing. This isn't actually putting anything on the ballot. This is a public hearing for May 7. And we just want to clarify, for the written record, that it is 3/1% as allowed by statute, not 3/100%. And so all of our briefings, all of our documentation has been on a 3/1%. But for clarity, we just wanted to make sure that it's not construed as a 3/100% of a percent, because that would make a big difference in everything that we're doing. Not being a math major myself, I think that might change things. So anyway, that is kind of, that's why we pulled it off, just so we can kind of clarify it for the record. Commissioners, anything to add on that, or?
I'm happy to go into a motion, if you'd like.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval to set a public hearing on May 7, 2019, to receive comments on a proposition to enact a 3/1% public safety sales tax increase.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve to set a public hearing on May 7, 2019, to receive comments on a proposition to enact a 3/1% public safety sales tax increase. Just a point of clarification, do we need to set the time on that for this?
You can add it for clarity, like for 9:15.
Okay, at 9:15 on May 7, 2019. Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number nine, Other Business. Are there any department heads or elected officials that would like to address the Commission?
This is an odd week from Public Works.
I know. What's wrong with these Public Works people? Commissioners, today was Bart Stepp's last day as our Deputy Director of Utility and Waste Management, and I just wanted to say he will be missed immensely. Bart did fantastic things. All this last month, he's been very concisely, easily sending out, here's this and that, and documenting and delegating, and he just makes it look simple. And I, and that, that's Bart. He just quietly went about his business, took care of business quickly and efficiently, and he's really going to be missed. So that's it, and please bear with us. That's the other bit, please bear with us.
Well, we appreciate hearing that, and I'll invite the other Commissioners to maybe make a remark or two, but Bart predates my arrival at the county by a couple of months, and he's done just a tremendous amount of work to get our utilities moving in the right direction, and he brought a lot of creativity and ingenuity to the position and has certainly made a lot of progress with the utilities in the county. And so we will miss him, but certainly very happy for him in this opportunity that he's taken with another organization, and certainly wish him all the best.
He came in at a time when, time, just in time, I should say, to tell us how much had not been done for so many years and the catastrophe that was, that was befalling us, literally. And that's not even just a joke. It came in, it was that bad, and we were pretty darn lucky to have him at that time. We owe him a great debt of thanks, because he got us out of a lot of trouble that we could have been in.
I only worked with him for three and a half months, but he was, he was a wealth of knowledge, so he will be missed, but very happy for his, his next adventure.
Thanks for reminding us. Moving on to item number 10, we have 10.1, we have a public hearing to consider adoption of revisions to Mason County Code Title 16, Plats and Subdivisions. Has staff to please brief.
Good evening, Kell Rowan with Mason County Planning Department. Several years ago, I, and I'm, I have Michael McSense here with me from the Planning Department as well, so he could correct me if I say anything wrong, but several years ago, it came to our attention that our master document for Title 16, subdivisions and plats, and our online code that's published, there were some discrepancies. And Michael McSense took it upon himself, for over several years, I understand, going through from 1937 to today, looking at all of the adopted ordinances at the county, and looking at where those discrepancies. Sometimes we updated the master document by a change in ordinance and failed to get it to the online publishing. We switched from LexisNexis to now MuniCode, but other times, it got updated in the code and failed to publish in the master document. So Michael spent a massive amount of time going through all of those documents and updating the master document, which we can then send to MuniCode. And we also took the opportunity, I think there were two occasions where we took the opportunity to be consistent with state law, that's Title RCW 5817, and also just gender neutrality. So I don't know if you have any questions, or if Michael has anything to add. I consider this a housekeeping item.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, very good. No questions, any questions from the public on this? Okay, hearing no more questions, I'll...
I do want, actually, I just failed. I did receive one comment from Citizen Ken Van Busker, asking if, regarding the transfer and/or sale of plats and subdivisions adjacent to agriculture resource lands, and he would like to see that the amendment recognize, the amendment to Title 16, recognize the requirement to notify potential buyers of those particular plats and subdivisions of their proximity to the agriculture resource lands and agricultural activities. And I've asked Michael to, how to respond to that.
So my thought was that, yeah, this is strictly about looking at our adopted code and the code that's published online and bringing those together. This is really outside of that scope. that scope. It may be something to consider in the future, but it's not within the scope of what we're doing tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move into public comment. If you'd like to make a comment on item 10.1, I'd invite you to come forward, and the Chair will recognize you. Anybody for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, move into Commissioner deliberation or a motion.
Thank you, Kel.
I make a motion to adopt the revisions to the Mason County Code Title 16, Plats and Subdivisions Code.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the revisions to Mason County Code Title 16, Plats and Subdivisions. Any additional discussion? Well, just to say thank you, Michael, for reading back through all of those ordinances and resolutions. That couldn't have been fun or easy, so I...
It was actually, it was kind of interesting.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Stuff I didn't have an idea about.
Well, very good, well, so we know you're a wealth of information now on, on those historic plats and subdivisions, and so we appreciate that, and thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Move on to item number 11, our Board Reports and Calendars. Commissioner Trask, if you get us started, I will go second, and then Commissioner Nedlen, if you can wrap it up for us.
Well, I think today was a special day, I was able to attend, I think many of us were able to attend the graduations for the Mental Health Court and the Drug Court. Quite emotional stories, and just to see that the, see how their lives have changed, quite inspirational, I would say. So then we're moving on to tomorrow. I have a meeting at Alderwick, then the Community Action Council meeting in the evening, also the LSC Roundtable. Thursday, I'll be in Olympia for the, for LSC, and meeting at the Capitol. Then I have an area on aging meeting that night. Thursday night, I'm also planning on going to the Jazz Festival at North Masons. Pick me up, man.
Do you play any instruments?
Do we get special seats, really? I didn't know we could do that.
We'll give you a special seat.
I just, I just want to hear you play.
Want it on the stage?
No, I just want to hear you play.
It's worth it, I'm not kidding you, you wait.
You do not want me playing anything musical or singing. Then I will go to the, on Friday, the Community Services Staff Meeting, I'm going to attend that for a couple of minutes, for a couple of hours, just two minutes. Pacific Mountain Workforce, I have a meeting in Chehalis. That night, we have a Carinet Dessert Auction. Saturday night is the Great Bend Choral Preview Event, so we get to hear the music that will be composed for the, oh goodness, my mind's going blank, special music composed for the...
So it's the, based on the Sailor's Song of Welcome, and it's being performed at Carnegie Hall Memorial Day Weekend, and then the following week will be performed, will have its West Coast debut here in Shelton at St. Edward's.
Thank you, thank you for having me on that one. And then we get to Monday, which will be my mom's birthday, and also the county briefing.
Okay, very good, thanks, Commissioner. So a couple of things, I also was at the Mental Health Court graduation today, this is our second graduate of that, that program, and as we continue to look at alternatives to incarceration, our therapeutic courts have seen a tremendous amount of success, and so we're very pleased at, at the results that we're seeing come out of that programming, and so today was, as I said, the second graduate from that program, and I think as it continues to expand, we'll see much more, you know, come out of that that is really positive for our community, so it was great to be there for that today. Going forward, this week, have the Capitol Land Trust Breakfast tomorrow morning, then followed by the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board, then I'll be meeting with the Building Industry Association of Washington, talk about state building code council issues. Later this week, I have a meeting with City Manager Jeff Knighton and Mayor Bob Rogers, talk about a few issues. We have a joint meeting of the Council and Commission coming up in a couple of weeks, and so this is, is a commission we had decided on a few agenda items to bring forward to the city, and so we hopefully will hear a couple of items that they want to bring forward and put together an agenda for that meeting that'll be held in a couple of weeks. Also be attending later this week, the Law Enforcement Breakfast, followed by the State Building Code Council Meeting. Over the weekend, I'll be attending the opening day for the Shelton Yacht Club, so I'll get my Oak Shoes on and my Abraal Fat going, and been excited to join that group for their opening day of their sailing season, and then I also will be attending the Great Bend Center for Music Preview on Saturday evening, back Monday for briefings.
I can't attend that one, I don't have those deck shoes or a Captain's hat. I have to change my wardrobe, though. Okay, Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, Mason Transit Authority Board Meeting, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, they had a board meeting for the Mount Moriah. I've been working with a bakery for North Mason, and we went out, we were looking at some potential places for them to go. I also met with the PR of Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, again, on behalf of putting together our bylaws and changing our bylaws, we had our briefings. North Mason Community Voice had a meeting with WashDOT last night for the community. It went over well, there was some definitely, some questions, there's a lot of things that they don't know yet at WashDOT, and the people started getting a little bit upset at that, because when they ask a question, they're hoping to have an answer. But overall, I think it went very well, and it's kind of interesting how things are going, though, and we're going to need a lot more local help for them to decide how they're going to have the connectors on the north and the south, just to let you know. I got there at the very end for the Mental Health Court, just enough time to congratulate the person, I'm sorry I missed that one, because I really wanted to. I did attend the Drug Court, and as the Commissioner says, it's really emotional, you know, you end up with goosebumps, everything, when you're watching these people regain their life and go back out there. It's really interesting when the prosecutor and attorney makes a motion to dismiss all charges with prejudice, means they're getting, they're getting wiped clean, and it's not coming back. That's pretty impressive, and she had, what'd they say, 375 days she was working on this to make it happen. That's quite an investment, so congratulations to us in North Mason. As everybody knows, when I first started, I didn't think that stuff worked very well, but the way we do it here, it's very successful, and I want to give them props for that. I will be attending the North Mason Music Festival, the Jazz Festival also, so I want a good seat, too, and I guarantee you, the interesting thing when he, when he plays, you will find yourself holding your breath, because he goes with such intensity, that you just are kind of watching, you'll find out when he's, when you actually see it, it's actually pretty impressive. I'll be meeting with the Board for the PWEs for some internal issues they have going on. I'm meeting with the folks at Ridge Motorsports in regards to proposals they may want to bring forward to the county. I have a cemetery board meeting, I have a degree at, that is being brought forward at Union City, brings back for our briefing, and then I want to throw in a couple, just in case you guys are going to be there, we're not having a meeting on Tuesday, it's our fifth Tuesday, and there's no meeting at this time, so I'm going to also be attending the North Mason Fire Authority Meeting, that's, I believe, on Monday. The Turning Point Mix and Mingle, which you're a board member on, I will be attending that, so if you want to make notice that you're going to be there, too, in this way, we're both, Wyre 15 Meeting, the Allen Community Association Meeting, Port of Allen, then the McLendon Breakfast in North Mason. If you get an opportunity, go and do it, you get a chance to mix and mingle with all the people that have been there for 30, 40 years. I get to see people that, that's the only time I see them, and I've known some of these people for 40 years. It's so crazy, but I love it, and it's free, so come on out, eat pancakes and sausage and eggs, and be a part of the community.
Excellent, very good, thank you. Okay, any, I think that brings us to item number 12, which is our adjournment, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I will adjourn.
Second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, we adjourned? We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Just kidding.
All right, no take backs.